Good morning. It's December 9, 2025, and you're at the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting. We'd like to thank you for being here. If you would, please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Pat Nagel from Redeemer Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, I'm just reminded this morning of what a gift this space is, where leaders of all sorts can come together on behalf of a community that we all love to call home, and where the community can engage with leadership. And so, as I look through this agenda and just see that, yes, there's much to approve, I'm grateful that there's much to celebrate. I'm grateful that voices can be heard, and grateful that this space is safe, and that everyone is trying to work towards a good and better future. We just invite your grace and your goodness, your wisdom and your love, as we just exercise the gift that this space is. Lord, we thank you, and I just pray, would you come and help us out as we long to see this space become better for everyone? In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. First up on the agenda is Presentations, and we're celebrating Red Ribbon Week 2025 Most Spirited School Contest. And coming up is Charmaine Monte and Elizabeth Escalante from SCOE Tobacco Use Prevention Education Coordinators.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Chair, Condit, and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Charmaine Monte, and my co-presenter today is Elizabeth Escalante. We are both coordinators from the Stanislaus County Office of Education Prevention Programs Department. We are joined today by our Director Marcelo Breones and our partner from the Stanislaus County Health Services Agency Samantha Borba. We are here to recognize the incredible dedication of our local schools in promoting a drug-free life through the Red Ribbon Week Most Spirited Schools Contest. This year, our contest saw 34 elementary, middle, junior high, and high school schools participate in the friendly competition, all centered on the national theme "Life is a Puzzle: Solve It Drug-Free." Before announcing the winners, we want to briefly highlight the significance of Red Ribbon Week. We have also prepared a slideshow to share visual examples of this year's decorations and activities. Red Ribbon Week began in 1985 honoring the memory and sacrifice of Drug Enforcement Administration Agent Enrique Quique Camarena Salazar, who was murdered by drug traffickers. While it started as a tribute, it has evolved into the nation's largest substance use prevention event. Today, it focuses on cultivating awareness in young people about the real risks of drugs and alcohol achieved through assemblies, educational lessons, contests, and community outreach. Hosting this contest is a vital opportunity to do many things in our community. First of all, to honor Agent Camarena Salazar and all U.S. officers. It's also a way to educate our youth on avoiding substance abuse pitfalls and to strengthen community ties within our schools. We are thrilled by the enthusiastic message we received from participating schools confirming the memorable experiences created for students, staff, and families. Thanks to the generous donation from our partners at Sutter Health Memorial Medical Center, we are also able to provide monetary awards to the winners this year. We are here to honor the winning schools of the Most Spirited Schools Contest, schools that not only exceeded the minimum criteria but truly left the selection committee in awe of their comprehensive efforts.
All right, so for today, every winning school will receive significant recognition for their outstanding commitment, including a certificate from the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors, so thank you so much, a certificate from the Office of Assemblymember Juan Alaniz, a certificate from the Office of Congressman Adam Gray, a certificate from the Office of California State Senator Marie Alvarado Gill, and a Red Ribbon Week Contest winner's plaque and certificate from the Stanislaus County Office of Education. Let's invite our winners to come forward. When your school name is called, please come to receive your awards and join us for a brief photo opportunity. So, we are going to go ahead and start with our elementary divisions. So, in third place, we celebrate the efforts of Caswell Dual Language Academy. All right, and now moving on to our second place, congratulations to Las Palmas Elementary School. We're gonna have you guys start over there, and start on outside. Shake hands. There you go. And then come this way. There you go. Assembly. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Everybody has something to hold?
Okay, in taking the prestigious first place in the elementary division, we recognize Grayson Elementary School. Okay, now we are moving on to the middle school and junior high division. So, we begin by recognizing a school with an honorable mention, Somerset Middle School. They unfortunately were not able to join us today, but we wanted to formally congratulate them. In third place, yay, Somerset. In third place, we celebrate the efforts of Emily J. Ross Middle School. All right, and in second place, congratulations goes out to Dutcher Middle School. Yes, Somerset was an honorable mention. And in first place, winner in the middle school junior high division, we proudly recognize Creekside Middle School.
Finally, we recognize our high school division winners. We actually had a tie for third place this year, so we're gonna recognize the impactful programs at both Rose Lawn High School and Del Puerto High School. So, we're gonna start with having Rose Lawn High School come up first for their award. All right, in second place, oh, sorry, then we will also call up Del Puerto High School. Congratulations. All right, in second place, demonstrating outstanding commitment, we recognize Open Valley Independent Study. And the first place winner in the high school division, we proudly congratulate Houston High School. Congratulations again to all the participating schools and our winners. This level of community engagement is only possible through collaborative support. Our profound gratitude goes out to the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors, Sutter Health Memorial Medical Center, the Stanislaus County Health Services Agency, and the Stanislaus County Office of Education. Thank you to the students, staff, parents, and community members who united to make this contest a resounding success. Thank you for your time, and we wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations to all of our students and all the work that you put in for that. It is very important that we keep that message alive. Stay away from drugs. Stay away from it. Leave or live a good, healthy life and a clean mind. Life is a puzzle, and you need to be able to put those puzzles together. Congratulations to all of you. Next up, did we have a final score on our districts?
District five. You won again.
District five. District five wins again.
Somerset was honorable mention.
Absolutely. You wanna do a grand exit? Okay, yeah, no, absolutely. Go ahead. Yep. All right. Congratulations again. All right, next up on the agenda is our Employee Service Award, and Marissa De Almeida with Child Support Services is going to be recognizing Michelle Dunn.
Board members and Mr. Hayes and Mr. Taro, today we're here recognizing and celebrating Michelle Dunn on her 25 years of county service. Michelle began her career with Stanislaus County at BHRS as an Admin Clerk III on November 6 of 2000. In January of 2006, she was hired at DCSS as a Legal Clerk III. Within months, Michelle promoted to a Child Support Specialist with DCSS, and then in 2013, she promoted again to a Child Support Supervisor. In 2024, Michelle earned another well-deserved promotion to Child Support Manager, where she's now a highly respected manager on our leadership team. The DCSS management team is small, but it is mighty. A Child Support Manager must possess a deep range of knowledge that spans every functional area in the department, and Michelle has demonstrated that range with exceptional skill. Michelle has worked in nearly every unit of DCSS, from clerical to research and development. She's currently the Acting Staff Development Manager, and in this role, Michelle has been responsible for onboarding dozens of new DCSS employees. Michelle's greatest strength is that she is a woo, a natural at winning others over. If you know your strength finders and you know Michelle, then you know that she embodies this theme perfectly. She's fun, she's energetic, she's approachable and engaging. One of my favorite memories of Michelle was just recently watching her greet staff during our GOLs kickoff event. I watched Michelle warmly and sincerely greet every employee and make them feel their value on that day. She's the perfect introduction to DCSS for new staff because she can immediately make people feel welcome, valued, and confident as they begin their journey with us. Michelle's passionate about the department and the families that we serve. She serves as an ambassador for DCSS in many ways. Michelle currently oversees our partnership with workforce development, where she excels at engaging customers to assist them in obtaining employment. She's also successfully led the department's Safeguard Review Team this year, and she did a phenomenal job. Her commitment, her communication, and her attention to detail ensured that we passed a Safeguard audit with zero internal findings. Michelle creates connection wherever she goes, and DCSS and her family, her husband, her two daughters, and her grandson are blessed to have Michelle as their cheerleader. For 25 years, Michelle has brought professionalism, empathy, and dedication to the community that we serve. She represents the very best of DCSS, and we're grateful for her hard work, her loyalty, and the positive impact that she has made. We're extremely proud to have Michelle as part of our DCSS family and thank her for 25 years of service. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just wanted to briefly thank you. It's been an honor to work for the county and serve our community, and you don't do 25 years in the county without having many members who support you and mentors. Some are in the audience today, especially with my department, so I want to thank them, and I want to thank you, Marissa, for your recognition in the board. Thank you.
Michelle, thank you for your years of service here to Stanislaus County and service to our families and children, and your leadership qualities. It's what makes Stanislaus County a great place to work. Thank you for your service. Okay, next up is General Services Agency Andy Johnson, recognizing Richard Hole.
Good morning, Chairman Condit, members of the Board of Supervisors, COAs, and County Council Tombos. It is my great honor to present Rich Hole with his 25-year service award. Before we start, there's no greater example of leadership. It was when your entire team comes downtown, and I know how much he loves doing that to the boardroom. So, we have all of our mechanics here with us today and our support staff, and this team is amazing. They work on vehicles across every kind of make and model you can imagine. We have 1,200 vehicles in our fleet. We have 300 other types of vehicles. Some of them are fun, like water crafts, and some of them are tools for law enforcement, which I personally don't find as fun, but very necessary. Rich's family has a history of dedication to Stanislaus County. He has aunts and uncles who were in the county service. His sister is a manager in the county service, and Rich is now a manager in the county service. In fact, his aunt was born in the Ranger House at Frank Rains Park. And so, we are actively rebuilding that using insurance proceeds right now. In 2000, Rich began his career with the Chief Executive Office Fleet Services Division. In 2007, he was promoted from Equipment Services Technician to Mechanic. He was then had the opportunity in 2013 to be our lead mechanic. His peers select him as Union Stewart for AFME, and one of his fondest memories is negotiating bargaining contracts with CO Hayes before he was CEO. In 2023, Rich did such a good job that we promoted him to manager, and he's now leading the team. And I can honestly say that the morale out there is extremely high. When we go to the shop, the team is smiling, they're working hard. He's done such a great job in building rapport out there. He is also our expert in all things fleet. He regularly gives me updates on the state's clean advanced vehicle standards and what we have to do, which match exactly what the California General Services Agency says. So, Rich stays up on top of all of those type of things. He holds notable certificates from the Automotive Service Excellence Academy, and he has an associate's degree in automotive technology. Rich, supervisors have used words like thoughtful. He recently met with the Sheriff's Office, who is our biggest customer throughout the year, 70% of our work orders to ensure that we will bring more of the upfitting work back in-house. But he's also dedicated. Even though I don't like it when he does it, he grabs the trimmer and mows down the weeds at the fleet, at least on the weekend, right? Recently, our safety analyst, which the board gave us a safety analyst, said fleet is killing it. So, they are doing such a great job out there. Most recently, the team won the award under Rich's leadership for the most outstanding non-law enforcement vehicle, and the pride that this team put in the shop is they created, lack of a better word, a very fancy ice cream truck. And it actually goes out for the Sheriff's Office and builds community, and the sheriff's deputies have the opportunity to interact with the community in a positive way. And so, they went to the Ripon Menlo Park Emergency Upfitter Show, and they won that award. And it's not uncalled. They win awards there almost every single year. He's known for ownership and pride. He stepped up during the pandemic and ensured we had all the fuel that we need. The only thing that Rich and I really truly disagree on is he is an avid 49ers fan, and he likes to remind me regularly how my Cowboys are doing. He's a huge Sacramento Kings fan. He and his lovely wife who are here with us are off-road enthusiasts, and they put on several events throughout the year in our off-road vehicle parks. So, Rich, that I've said enough. Thank you for everything that you've done, and I appreciate it.
Rich, if you wanna say a few words?
Thank you very much. Started 25 years ago. Never thought I'd be here this long. I always think it was like a five-year job, but it's been a great opportunity. I loved my union experience, and I'm really appreciating my manager role now. And I've loved working for the county my whole career. Thank you to the support of my wife, and actually, my sister Kelly Rodriguez. She was the one that got me the job here. I would have never applied for the county back in the day. It wasn't on my radar, but she was already an employee with the county and pushed me over the edge to make sure I applied for the job, and I'm still here, and I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Rich, you're kind of a legacy. You got all these family members. That's great. Thank you for using your leadership skills, your ingenuity for keeping our fleet. And I don't even know how many cars we have. A thousand?
1,200.
1,200 plus. 1,200 plus vehicles on the road. Thank you for all the work that you do. If I could ask you, my car's making a funny sound. Congratulations. Marissa, you are back up again and recognizing Eva Parera?
Marissa, you are back up again and recognizing Eva Parra. Para? I always get it wrong, I'm sorry.
Good morning again. We're here today to recognize and celebrate Eva Parra on her 30 years of county service. Eva began her career with Stanislaus County on November 20th, 1995, as a legal clerk one in the district attorney's office. Eva transferred to the courts in September of 1997 and promoted to legal clerk four in February of 2000. In July of 2000, Eva transferred to the family support division of the DA's office, which is now DCSS. In November of 2002, Eva became a child support officer, now known as a child support specialist, and she's held this position with DCSS since 2002. A child support specialist must navigate sensitive, complex and deeply personal situations with compassion and clarity. Eva exemplifies what it means to serve our community with heart. She ensures that every family she works with understands their case, their options and every step of the process. Her communication is not only clear, but it is also caring. Eva manages a bilingual caseload, which requires an even higher level of patience, understanding and skill. She consistently rises to the challenge, providing equitable, thoughtful and accessible service to the families who depend on her. Her ability to bridge language, navigate sensitive issues and support parents through difficult circumstances has made a meaningful difference in the lives of countless families in Stanislaus County. Eva has had a number of standout moments during her career with DCSS. During the pandemic, Eva was one of the people that we used who was experienced and served on a pilot team responsible for testing and refining the use of DocuSign for legal documents. Eva's work helped shape the smoother, more accessible experience for staff and customers. Eva has also led many trainings for her peers throughout the department and is always willing to answer questions and help out newer staff. She's been a consistent champion for the department over the years. She's worked on many outreach initiatives and has been a constant participant at our annual Kids Connect Community Celebration. At the event, Eva's done a myriad of different jobs, the most important of which includes providing live and instant Spanish translation of the speeches that are given by the director, partners and representatives. For over 30 years, Eva has brought professionalism, empathy and unwavering dedication to her public service. She represents the very best of DCSS and we're proud of the positive impact she makes every day to the families that we serve. So we want to sincerely thank Eva for her dedication and her three decades of service. Congratulations.
First, thank you for the invitation today. 30 years of service was a goal that I had for my, set for myself and now I can say I have met that goal. I am honored to be here. Another personal fact about me is that I was raised in a domestic violence household. My parents and my three older siblings fought every day as if they hated each other. My journey with the county began 30 years ago on November 20th. I started at the DA's office, then in 2000, I started working at the child support office. 30 years ago, I was straight out of college and I had big dreams and ambitions. A lot has happened in 30 years. In 1997, I lost a brother for, to drugs. In 2004, my mother lost her slow drug addicted battle and my only, on my only daughter's birthday. I loved her so much that I had to sign the documents to get her off of life support. I knew I couldn't be selfish and the doctors kept continually calling me at work, telling me that we were prolonging her agony. While she was dying, I was going through a divorce that I, that I didn't want, but I knew I needed to, needed to do for my own sanity. In 2008, my dad died of lymphatic cancer on Valentine's Day. While my dad was dying of cancer, I was involved in a mentoring program through our department. The 10-year-old little girl Evelyn that I was mentoring was diagnosed with cancer as well, and she was dying too. I cried every night asking God why. Also in 2008, my daughter became pregnant and gave birth to her child and then again in five, five years later to a second child. So I have two grandsons. I would like to mention that I did struggle with the decision to accept this invitation today. When I first started working for this county, I had the confidence that it, that it offered stability that I desperately needed. Every year, our wages increased with inflation and the cost of living, but that unfortunately has changed. Back then, we didn't hear from our union every four years requesting that we show up to board meetings to request equitable raise in pay. Only someone who does what we do really has any idea how challenging it is to work for the Department of Child Support. Each year, we are required to do better than the prior year. Obtain more court orders, collect more child support and distribute more money to the families. I remember when we were nowhere near to collecting $50 million a year and we, now we are collecting over 57 million a year and we're told we need to do better than the prior year. It takes a lot, it takes a certain type of person to do what we do at the Department of Child Support. You need patience, courage, empathy, determination and resilience, a spirit of never give up. You need to remember to stay calm and focused every day to be able to speak to people about the most sensitive things in their life, their children and their money. We are also required to locate people who work for cash and a lot of them are homeless and do not have a valid social security number or a driver's license and are illegally here. At the end of each day, you are physically, emotionally and mentally drained. Through the years, I've learned a lot about the department and myself. I committed myself to this county to faithfully serve both in English and Spanish. It's been challenging, but I knew I couldn't give up. So many people needed me, so I've been faithful to my calling. I have proudly passed it, I have proudly paid it forward. Child support was there when my mother needed it. Child support was there when I needed it and child support is there now that my daughter needs it. I have suffered a, with debilitating migraines most of my adult life and these migraines have ruined many weekends, but I'm thankful to God who has always been with me. He has helped me through these 30 years to complete my mission, to faithfully serve my county and the children of Stanislaus County, and it has been an honor. With the words of Napoleon Hill, I will end with this. I have discovered the law that governs all prosperity. To give is to grow. To serve is to reign. To thank is to receive. I am not a servant of circumstances, I am an architect of outcome. Thank you very much.
Eva, thank you for sharing your personal story. Thank you for using your skills and wisdom and your life experience in serving the people of Stanislaus County for 30 years. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record, direct all comments towards the dais and so that it's fair for every speaker, keep comments to the five-minute time limit. First up on the cards are Ron McMurtry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ron McMurtry here. Just information items, just interesting things that I would like the public to know about. I had just submitted to correspondence a list of intersections that I think need the highest attention, in my humble opinion. These are intersections that are not only dangerous in the county, but intersect with concerns with the county transit as well. I'm highly involved with county transit, if you don't already know. So that was submitted, I was, I got a knowledge from correspondence that that's in the record. Stan RTA recently hired Kim Lee Horn to conduct the short-term, short-range transit plan and they are beginning their publicity campaign, campaign this week. On Wednesday, there's going to be an open house at the Transit Center at 4:30. Thursday, there at 1:00 PM, there's going to be a Zoom call for public feedback. The members of the public can go to connectthes.org to fill out a survey, to give their feedback and follow up the phases and so on. And of course, some of you are on the board and are aware of that, but this is also for the public. Also a nice little thing for me is that because of my extensive kind of obsessive interest in trans, public transit, I've collected so much data, talking to drivers and just analyzing, analyzing, looking at history and whatever, that the Stan RTA staff recommended that Kim Lee Horn work with me as far as gathering data because I'd collected so much and you know, that's not something that contractors work with an individual, but they are very impressed with me. And so I'm going to have access to the database the staff does so that I can enter all this data that I know, get this stuff out of my head and get it on there. And so we are going to have probably the best database we have had as far as doing this short-range transit plan. I don't know how far back in history, but probably in history. So there, a nice little feather in my cap. I'm going to skip that one. Okay, some uncomfortable things that I just can't let go and we have time sensitive. So the, I would like to request that the, in the future, this is an issue that Supervisor Withrow brought up, couple of concerns and one is the, because of the Diablo Grande, what a terrible name for a community, by the way. You guys realize that means great devil. Okay, this is, okay, just, you know, this is bad vibe. But anyway, the fact that a lot of properties were foreclosed on, and I would like to recommend that you request in the future that the tax collector, whenever you have a lot of units in the same neighborhood, to put that in its own class, its own group and separate it. Because Supervisor Withrow did bring up, can we separate these and, you know, and apparently there's a bureaucratic, and I don't know what, Counselor Boz didn't want to speak publicly, but whatever that was, it looks like that's a little bit of a, you know, boondoggle. And the other thing, another fun thing, the Crow's Landing Business Park, I had not realized that that, that had been kind of going on for a long time and we want to go ahead and again Supervisor Withrow expressed concern of throwing, potentially throwing money down the drain. Are we going to proceed with this next project? Is this going to ever get anywhere? And I would like to recommend and request, can we please maybe halt things for right now and have another public meeting and see where we are now? Maybe it's not as prudent as it once was. Sorry to pick on District Five Supervisor Condit, but I just feel like, you know, you guys inherited some boondoggles from the past and we need to relook at these things and we're having a tightening budget undoubtedly. Let's look at these things, let's take, let's make some brave decisions here. Okay? Thank you. What else we got? Oh, just a little news item. What's happening with the ICE is there's, some legal organizations have been mentioning that there's an increase in something called emergency custodianships in the cases in which parents are not citizens, but their children are. They're very, very worried, of course. And so now they're going to lawyers and making sure that their children being taken care of. So this is, you know, this is what's happening in this country. I don't know how much locally. And so anyway, so as we have challenging things coming up, interesting little brand, I guess, came up, CCC. So in order to prosper ahead, no matter what the challenges are, curiosity, creativity, courage, that is what is required. And Eva earlier did mention that courage, I noticed she hit those points. That is what is needed. We can still have prosperity in these uncertain times and I'm going to really push for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next up is Ernie Garza.
Good morning Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ernie Garza. I'm the ex-general manager for Keys Community Services District and I am here today on behalf of the over 6,000 residents of Keys. I am deeply concerned about the governance practices of the Keys Community Services District. Key issues. The KCSD board terminated me as general manager after five consecutive monthly closed sessions to discuss my performance evaluation without transparency or due process. They just came out and asked me to resign. Number two, they promoted an employee despite documented misuse of public funds through improper health insurance coverage. The administrative executive had been secretly divorced since 2012 and it was revealed in July, when I informed the president and vice president about this issue, I told them that if they continued approving the invoices on the warrant list, that they would be complicit. But they didn't care, they went ahead and did it. But most urgently, on November 25th, the board approved a sewer rate increase that included a $3 million capital reserve added at the direction of two board members without full approval or explanation. The impact? These actions are not just procedural errors, they directly harm one of the most economically disadvantaged communities in Stanislaus County. Families in Keys cannot afford unjustified rate hikes, especially when decisions are made in secret and meetings are not recorded for the public to view. Call to action, I respectfully ask this board to exercise its oversight authority. Please investigate KCSD's governance practices, refer these matters to LFO, the state controller, and ensure that Keys residents receive transparent, lawful and ethical services. The people of Keys deserve accountability. We need your help to protect our community from unlawful actions and unjust financial burdens. I gave to the clerk some of the supporting documents to hand out to you that talk about one of them has to do, the issues are concerned. There's an email to a consultant on July 24th, 2025, asking for lower reserves so that the rate hikes wouldn't be so excessive. And on July 25th, the following day, I was asked to resign. On August 27th, I wrote a letter to the DA regarding a secret meeting on August 12th, 2025. I have not heard anything back from them. On November 20th, they sent a letter to the, the board, President Parker, pointing out the misuse of public funds and insurance fraud. They just completely ignored it. And so now I have written a letter to the civil and criminal grand jury, hopefully that they can take a look into these things. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ernie. All right, next up is Milt Truwiler. Morning, Milt.
Morning, board members, staff, community members. Milt Truwiler, I'm a lifetime Stanislaus County resident and today's title of my presentation is the greatest challenge of Stanislaus County in the 21st century. We learn from the past, we live in the present and we plan for the future. I'm speaking today to make you aware that Stanislaus County is something that's not found anyplace else on the earth. The farmland that is central part of our county is irreplaceable. We have the prime farmland soils, we have the irrigation water from our Turlock and Modesto irrigation districts and we have the climate. We can grow fruit and nut tree crops not found anywhere else on the earth. To my fellow community members and good thoughtful people of Stanislaus County, it's our responsibility to see that our farmland is saved and preserved. Agriculture is our number one industry in Stanislaus County. Now it's time to do what must be done to preserve Stanislaus County's farmland forever. We must be good stewards for our children and descendants since they cannot plan for themselves. They can't plan for themselves because they're too young or they haven't even been born yet. There's not one acre of farmland in some entire states and even countries as good as the farmland we have here. There is an abundance of poor soils and wastelands in California and our nations for the, and our nation for the developers to build homes, warehousing and industry on, even right here in Stanislaus County to the east side of our county and to the west of I-5. We're educated adults and we have an intellect and we have choices and yet a few thoughtless people are choosing not to conserve the priceless resources we have. We do not want to use up this farmland that will be needed for our children and future generations. The farmland areas in the MID and TID irrigation districts are already fully economically developed. They're producing food for our state and our nation. The farm, this farmland can produce food for our children and future generations for hundreds of years. Now is the time to set, shut down this senseless growth. We know that creating a food desert in Stanislaus County would be a terrible mistake. The future of our children and descendants is our responsibility as adults and parents. We are intellect, we have intellect and educated adults and we know that irreplaceable farmland must be must be saved. We must stop all growth in the farmland in the MID and TID irrigation districts today. In the TID and MID irrigation districts of the county, we must grow up on the infill and blighted areas of our cities and neighborhood communities. We need to build an abundance of high-rise, a luxury, and affordable apartment complexes, townhouses, and condominiums to save this farmland for our children and descendants. I know we can do this. You know we can do this. And now's the time to do it. We all have to work together on doing this, and we do it by growing up and not out. It's totally doable, but it's hard to get, I mean, we've got to just make the mechanisms, give the county cities the mechanisms that they need so that they can grow up. They don't have those today. Everything is R1, R1, spread out, sprawl. We have to stop that. We don't need that. We need to grow up, and we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Milt. Next up is Brian Evatt.
Good morning, Brian Evatt. Good morning, Council. As he was saying, the farmers, as Trump was saying, we're gonna give them $12 billion. We're gonna help the farmers out because we're gonna help their families for generations to come so they can hold on to those farms. Well, in the same way, we are all farmers of the people that are out here. That's our community. We farm our community. Same thing, we have to look at the protection of our community, just as we look at the protection as our farmers and our crops and our food. And the whole thing is, today, it's really hard. These kids that we had out here, they may become drug addicts, they may become homeless. But if we constantly focus on that we spend our money on judicial system and homeless people creating crime and everything, then we're not growing a very good society. So we need to start looking into the point that we grow this society the same way that Trump's saying, let's get the families to stay together. Let's keep those farms together. Let's hold this. Let's put money into situations where they will not wind up in a bad situation and lose the farm, or we turn homeless in this case. So let's turn around. A lot of times, people are homeless because their families die. They're, they don't have a home anymore because the house is taken away, it's stuck into probate, it's divided by that. We break our family units apart because we don't provide the situation to hold them in. We create more homeless because we don't provide the situation to, they can hold on to their parents or their grandparents' items. In the same way as Trump's saying, let's hold on to them farms. Let's keep our people and their families' homes. It's what we want to do. So let's grow a better thing. On probate and courts that we have to go through, let's help these families hold on to that stuff. Otherwise, it's just torn apart. Why should we just tear this stuff apart and tear these family units down? So we create this homeless situation. We spent hundreds of millions of dollars in this county alone on homeless, and we really don't have that many homeless. And the money is just spread out thin. And then the homeless are still out on the streets. And why are they there? Because they lost their family's farm. Now they're homeless. They lost their family's assets that were built. Now they're homeless. They turned to drugs to make money. This is what we have to stop. And I don't understand why we can't create a situation where we help these people before they lose, lose these homes. Now Trump's decided, $12 billion, let's help them. Now as a smaller community, can't we help these individuals in these residential areas that parents have died? Can't we help them through probate? We help the homeless, we stick them in places, we feed them and everything. But let's start in the beginning before they get there. So let's make probates easier for these people. Because these kids don't know, these kids are gonna turn around, that we've seen out here, their parents are gonna die, they have no direction, they have nowhere to go. What do they could do? Oh, it's online. Go to the library, figure it out. What do we got? Clerks that run our, our court systems. They're not as easy as they're supposed to be. It's supposed to be easy. They, they inherit the stuff, they get this stuff. Let's help them keep their farm, basically. And I think you can understand what I'm trying to say. And I hope that we can change this, and we can make probate laws a lot easier so our families can stay in the homes, that we don't create more poor. Because that's costing this county fortunes, hundreds of thousands, or hundreds of millions of dollars. And we just keep dumping it out to the churches, they keep running everything. Let's keep them in their homes. Let's start at the beginning. And that's all I want to see is, well, let's work together to save this. Let's create an easier probate. So these people, let's help them. Let's hold their hands and put them through it so they don't lose it. Can we do that? Can we work on that? I think if you really look into yourself, and if it was your kids and your problem, and you died, and all of a sudden, they don't know what to do, or they're young, you're just turning them into homeless. We don't need a society where all we have is judicial system, homeless, crime. We don't need this. Because that's what we do. We put them out on the streets, and we create it ourselves. And the changes have to start right here, you know? That's the way I look at it, and I hope that maybe you guys can look at it that same way. So let's make those changes easier for those kids coming up, because we're all kids of the county. All right, that's all I gotta say. Maybe it's something to look at, but I appreciate the time, you guys.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Evatt. Next up is Richard Bregero.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Richard Bregero. I'm a 76-year-old resident of the Diablo Grande community. My wife and I, Michelle, purchased a home in 2014 and took up residence at that time. At that time, the community was relatively flourishing. In 2019, the Water District, Western Hills Water District, stopped paying for water. They were acquiring from Kern County Water Agency, which you're probably aware of. And they're contracted to pay 1.2 million annually. During that period, the Water District was taking in approximately $130,000 monthly. That money, from what I understand, was, has disappeared. And also, there's a Melrose tax. The bond was refinanced, and it's my understanding that the Board of Directors of the Western Hills had a meeting and made a decision to stop paying against the bond. So they continue to take in revenues from individual homeowners, and it's approximately $2,500 annually, and they are keeping that money. They're not paying against the bond. So they are, and what happened, over the summer, Kern County threatened to stop water to the community, and the Water District appealed, said that in order to continue to provide water, they would need to raise the price and the base rate for water to each individual home came up to six, around, I think it was 658, I believe, somewhere close to that, and plus water usage. And since then, in October, I spoke to Ashley, the lady who takes in the money when I would make my payment. And she told me, she said, I'm pretty much in charge of making decisions about who I pay or don't pay. And I've been paying, since August, she started paying $20,000 a month to Kern County Water Agency. That's it, $20,000 a month. She's taking in approximately $300,000 a month. They are, they have the money that they're taking in from the Melrose. That's all disappearing, or it's gone. So there's the Melrose money that's gone, the, the money that came when they refinanced the Melrose, that's gone. There's a lot of money gone, is basically, and there's no, this is a Mickey Mouse operation. We're talking about 600 homes. I used to be a plumbing contractor. I have my own business. I knew a little bit about water. It takes a couple of employees to maintain. This is an infrastructure that was put in around 2002. So it's in relatively good condition. They don't have multiple leaks, they don't have a lot of problems. So basically, the entire operation amounts to someone, the money coming in, and minor maintenance, chemicals used to purify the water. The water comes in through the canal. They have a pumping system that brings the water in from the canal. They have another pumping system, the Diablo Grande, which goes up to a large tank which has a million, million gallon capacity. And I spoke to some of the chemical corporations that provide, and they told me, you can get a truckload of chemicals to purify water for about $6,000. So there is no big overhead at all. You've got a couple of employees, you know, two or three employees, and they're taking it. Right now, they're taking in $300,000 a month. They've already, there's about, she told me, Ashley, this woman who's taking the money, who tells me she's in charge, said that approximately 450 homes out of the 600 have been keeping up with this payment. 150 have not. And they've already begun cutting water to those homes. Those people have lost their water, so they have no water, because they can't pay this $600, $700 a month bill. So anyway, this, there's a real serious problem here. I would like to thank Mr. Chance Condit, who has given me some guidance, and I expect to get continual guidance. And I believe this needs to go to the grand jury. Because the money is going south, and that's the bottom line. What else can I say?
Thank you, Mr. Bregero.
Have a wonderful day.
You too. Next up is Dan Vega. Good morning.
Throughout history, strong communities prepared for emergencies by keeping basic reserves of food and drinking water. It was common sense. Modern life has made those practices easy to overlook because most of the time, everything works. But good planning isn't about what usually happens, it's about protecting people when the unusual happens. While reviewing our local emergency information, I found no public indication that the city of Modesto or Stanislas County currently maintains a dedicated, long-term stockpile of food or drinking water for residents. Our emergency strategy, strategy appears to rely heavily on state or federal aid. In many large-scale disasters, outside resources are delayed, overwhelmed, or simply unavailable. That's not a criticism, it's a reality seen in emergencies across the country. Relying solely on outside help is a risk. Building even a modest local reserve strength, strengthens the entire community. And the truth is, this is fully within our abilities. Storing shelf-stable, shelf-stable food and water is straightforward, affordable, and scalable. A practical approach would look like this. Start by identifying suitable county or city-owned buildings that could support safe, cool, dry storage. Set a long-term goal, such as building toward one week of emergency food for our population, not, not all at once, but gradually. Begin with a pilot program, focusing on one city or one vulnerable, vulnerable area. This avoids being overwhelmed. Progress matters more than perfection. The storage method can be simple. Food-safe, five-gallon buckets using Mylar bags with oxygen absorbers can preserve basic staples like rice, beans, wheat berries, nonfat dry milk for many years when stored correctly. These are inexpensive, durable, and easy to rotate. After a set period, the county can distribute the food to local food banks or residents, replenish the stock, and maintain a continuous cycle instead of letting supplies expire. This idea isn't theoretical. Large cities such as New York maintain emergency reserves for their residents. If a dense metropolitan area can do this, an agricultural region like ours can certainly explore a program on an appropriate scale. Beyond emergency readiness, this would demonstrate leadership, improve public confidence, and show that our county takes self-reliance and resilience seriously. It doesn't require new technology, and it does not require perfection, just planning, consistency, and a willingness to start. Food and water security is one of the most basic responsibilities of any community. I believe taking concrete steps toward a local emergency reserve is both practical and wise, and I hope you will consider supporting a pilot program that allows us to build this capability responsibly over time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next up is Julianne Phillips from Senator Alvarado Gil's office.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you so much for your time this morning. My name is Julianne Phillips. I'm with the Office of Senator Alvarado Gil. I'm here this morning to provide some updates. This past weekend, the Senator was in the district. On Friday, she participated in the Turlock Christmas Parade. And then on Saturday, she attended the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce's Christmas Carnival at the Modesto Gospel Mission, provided some outreach, and then also attended the Modesto City Christmas Parade. Our DO, our district office, has been very active as well. Last week, I hosted mobile office hours in the city of Patterson ahead of their city council meeting. And this evening, I'll be doing the same in the city of Turlock. That'll be my last mobile office hours of the year. And we're always looking for more opportunities for outreach. So if you have any questions or any events, please let us know. We're happy to help. And happy holidays. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next up is Nancy Robinson from the Modesto Garden Club.
Good morning, Chairman Condit and members of the board. I always enjoy speaking to all of you. My name is Nancy Robinson. I'm president of the Modesto Garden Club. I'm here this morning to let you know about a few things that are going on with our club, including our annual elegant holiday table viewing, which will be tomorrow, Wednesday, December 10th, from 1 o'clock to 7 o'clock. It will be held at Del Rio Country Club at 801 Stewart Road here in Modesto. Tickets are $15 and may be purchased at the door. We encourage the public to join us and enjoy the dazzling display of the 30 table settings. We will also have spectacular raffle items there available. Wait till you see everything that's there. We always appreciate the support from the community. Please also save the date for our next spring annual garden tour, which will be on April 18th next year. We already have five beautiful homes scheduled, and we will update you as we get closer. As you know, the downtown center plaza is scheduled to be replaced with a soccer stadium. The Modesto Club is actively involved in making sure that the Eileen Gala Memorial Clock is relocated in an appropriate location in Modesto to continue it to be an iconic symbol of Modesto. We have just finished planting the clock for the winter. Just a month ago, we also replanted the 152 downtown pots. We enjoy keeping up with Modesto's city beautification. Another honor worth mentioning is this, last year, one of our members was selected as Youth Leader of the Year for the entire state of California among 228 clubs in the California Garden Clubs Incorporated organization. She was recognized for demonstrating the most ingenuity and dedication in working with youth groups. She works with 19 elementary schools here in Modesto, teaching students the importance of eating properly and how to grow food with hands-on practical learning. Last September 19th, we installed a Blue Star Memorial Marker, which our club purchased, at the Commemorative Air Force Central California Valley Squadron Hangar. This special ceremony was attended by some of the Board of Supervisors. I really appreciate your attendance and support. Remember, our table viewing is tomorrow, Del Rio, from 1 to 7. Thank you for your support, and have a wonderful Christmas.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, that is my last speaking card. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment and move to the consent calendar. Any supervisors pulling any items?
I just, we have a conflict, myself and I think Manny also have a conflict on item B6 that we're gonna step out.
B6.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. The Lyon Act requires local officials to accuse themselves from proceedings pending before them if they have received a contribution from one of the parties- before them if they have received a contribution from one of the parties in excess of $500. And these proceedings include, but are not limited to, non-competitive bid contracts, permits, licenses, and entitlements. So if the appropriate time would be appropriate for the board to go along, they'll throw to step down.
Okay. Before the board takes action on any of the consent calendar, does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on any matter on the consent calendar? And I'll bring it back to the board and take a motion on everything except these.
Or should approve all items of the B6?
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Pushing to approve item B6.
I have a first.
Second.
And a second on B6. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Before we get started on our public hearings, I do just want to make a quick comment. We do have two public hearings on this morning's agenda, and after we had posted this agenda, we did determine that the public hearing items needed to be addressed in reverse order. So as a result, the board will, supervisors will first consider item 6B2, and then they will consider item 6B1. Thank you.
Okay, 6B2 is a public hearing to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval of general plan amendment application, six-cycle housing element update, and find the request exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, planning and community development. Kristi Dowd.
I'm going to start off this morning. Good morning, Chair Condit, members of the board, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Taro. I'm Angela Freitas, the county's planning director. It's a pleasure to finally be here before you this morning with two unanimous recommendations of approval from our Planning Commission for the two public hearing items that are before you, the housing element update and the housing element implementation that includes a general plan amendment, rezon and ordinance amendment. Since the board authorized the agreement to proceed with consulting services for the housing element, it has been nearly four, a nearly four-year journey of navigating local needs and capacities with the state requirements around the topic that we all agree needs to be top priority, that being housing. Leading us in today's presentation is Kristi Dowd, our Deputy Director of Planning Services, and joining her is Jason Montague, Senior Planner with RenCon, the county's consultant for the project. Before I hand over the floor to Kristi, I just want to thank her and her staff, and Jason and the RenCon staff for all their hard work and dedication in getting us here today.
Thank you. It is indeed a pleasure to be here finally with you guys. It's been a long journey. So here before you this morning is a review and a recommendation for the board to adopt the county's six-cycle housing element, which covers the period between January 2023 and December 2031, as well as adoption of a sequoia common sense exemption. The housing element is just one of seven elements in the county's general plan, but it is the most strictly regulated element by the state, and it's required to be reviewed every eight years and approved by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. We have been going through this process. We've gone through multiple rounds of review with them and finally have a tentative approval from HCD. The housing element identifies current and future housing needs within an eight-year planning cycle. It identifies barriers and opportunities, establishes an action plan. The housing element, however, does, although it encourages residential development, it does not require that development to occur. Just generally, it provides a community profile in terms of demographics, our housing stock, affirmatively furthering fair housing. It provides an analysis of government constraints, non-governmental constraints, the zoning that we have for a variety of housing types, what our housing resources are, projected housing needs, where we could accommodate housing on sites, and then has goals, policies, and action programs. Again, it covers an eight-year period from 2023 to 2031. And this last cycle, which is the sixth cycle, this current cycle, it saw significant changes from the fifth cycle. So it was much more challenging for the jurisdictions in California to develop a housing element that met state law, specifically in the areas of affirmatively furthering fair housing. There was much more analysis required for our sites inventory. Arena started with Stan Cog, which was adopted by them way back in 2022. The deadline for adoption technically was December 31st, 2023, which was extended to April 30th, 2024. So we are a year and a half behind in that requirement. We did community engagement and outreach throughout the process, beginning with prior to developing the draft, the first draft of the housing element. We did some stakeholder interviews with local housing developers, agencies, housing and community health advocates. We put out an online mapping tool for anyone to be able to go on there and give input on where our sites should be for our sites inventory. We had a project website where we had all of our documents available. We had both virtual and in-person community meetings, multiple meetings with our General Plan Update Committee, and that was throughout 2022 and 2023. In the latter half of 2023, around August, we finally released our first draft for a 30-day public review period. We sent letters to all the property owners of the sites that are proposed to be rezoned. We had multiple municipal advisory council presentations through September and October of 2023. We then made edits based on the input we received through that community outreach, and then we sent the first draft of the housing element, which is required for a 90-day review to HCD, from November 16th, 2023 to February 13th, 2024. Based on the input we received from HCD, we then did some additional stakeholder interviews that were targeted to certain populations that represented extremely low-income families, farmworkers, and homeless. And then we made some additional edits and released a second draft, which was in the next August, 2024, for a 30-day review period for HCD. And then a public review period, and then the 30-day HCD review period. We got some additional comments, made additional edits, and then the third draft was released for the public in January of this year, 2025. HCD then reviewed it for 30 days, gave some comments in the middle, allowed us to make some edits. We then circulated it again for public review. Out of that third draft, there was some recommendations for additional and ongoing public outreach. So we kind of paused the process for a few months, and we did additional community outreach in, you know, communities that weren't necessarily being represented by the MACs. So West Modesto, we went to the South Modesto Businesses United, went to Grayson, Park Lawn, a couple other places, made some additional edits based on the comments that we received. And then our fourth draft was released July of this year. And at that point, with a 30-day review from HCD, we finally did get the tentative approval letter. And we then also circulated the implementation, which is going to be the next item, because in order for HCD to certify our housing element, we need to have both board approval of our housing element and also of our rezoned sites. Sent additional landowner notices for the implementation side for 30-day reviews. We had additional MAC meetings, and public hearing notices were released for the homeowners of the rezoned sites and surrounding landowners, as well as to any interested parties and local, state, and federal agencies of interest for both the Planning Commission hearing and for this board meeting. So we have conducted community outreach and engagement throughout the process from prior to the draft to current. Based on community input, we did make some changes to our housing element. And here I just kind of am highlighting a few of those. We got repeated input that we should conduct meaningful outreach, and that's when we, as in response, conducted additional outreach throughout this process, both in person and virtually. We received input stating that housing should be located near transit, shopping, and jobs where there's sewer and water availability. And in response, you'll see that our sites inventory responds to that comment that we received from multiple people. Our sites are going to be located in areas that have access to transit, jobs, services, and, most importantly, water and sewer. We also got comments on the process saying the county needs more of a variety of housing and more flexible housing standards, and we responded to those comments by including actions in our housing element that require various zoning ordinance amendments to be created, some of which you will consider after this item, to allow for more flexibility in the siting of housing throughout the county. We received a request for an expanded analysis of fair housing. So in response to that, we did add significant amount of local knowledge in our housing element that pertains to fair housing and also to each individual neighborhood where we have sites identified. We received a request to analyze and discuss infrastructure availability, and so we did also incorporate a detailed analysis of infrastructure by community. We also received comments requesting that we tailor programs to address the unique needs of communities. And so we added metrics, milestones, and geographic targeting to our programs and our actions that are included in the housing plan. We had a request to strengthen program actions for special needs populations, specifically for farmworkers and extremely low-income households. And so we did target actions in our housing plan to those special populations. And then we had a comment requesting that our sites inventory equitably distribute housing units and show breakdown by community. And so we did modify our inventory to try to greater distribute units, and we added additional detail to our sites inventory analysis. We did receive several comment letters from California Rural Legal Assistance, or CRLA. Five responses. They all kind of focused on anti-displacement actions, actions targeted to recaps, which are areas that are low-resource areas that were mapped in the AFFH, our affordable, sorry, our affirmatively furthering fair housing chapter of our housing element. They requested that we added additional local knowledge and that we conduct meaningful community outreach, and that we add additional lower-income sites in high-resource or RCAA areas. We also received some comments from public service providers, from Modesto and Oakdale Irrigation Districts, just kind of listing where their infrastructure was located, and from Burbank, Paradise, and Salida Fire Districts, which both raised concerns with adequate fire service provision, specifically to the siting of additional high-density housing. And they were, in response, we just wanted to highlight that, you know, fire fees are required to be paid prior to issuance of a building permit. We are continually working with the fire districts to let them know if there's any planned housing so they can adjust their fees accordingly. And we did add a requirement for rezoned sites in Salida to annex into the Salida Fires Community Facilities District. And then we received multiple requests and inquiries from those landowner notices we sent out and from our newspaper mailing, just kind of asking what the rezon program was, what the housing element was, and many requests to have properties added to our rezon program. HCD provided four, and then four formal responses and two informal responses on our draft housing element. Generally, they just kind of requested that we conduct additional community outreach, which we did do, to address extremely low-income households and farmworkers, and that we continue to do that community outreach throughout this process. They asked for additional affirmatively furthering fair housing demographic and housing needs analysis, which we did incorporate, local knowledge, which we also incorporated, additional details on our infrastructure, requirements for new development, which we did add. But mostly, they focused on multiple rounds of comments, asking for specific commitments, discrete timing, metrics, and geographic targeting for multiple actions in our housing plan. And they wanted us to add actions that address affirmatively furthering fair housing, environmental justice, housing mobility, displacement prevention, infrastructure, place-based strategies, and commitments to conduct outreach and engagement. And that last point is really the big difference between the fifth and sixth cycle, or policies that have to do with each of these issues are required in the sixth cycle, whereas there was less of an emphasis in the fifth cycle. So ultimately, HCD did provide a tentative approval letter on September 29th, 2025.
Thanks, Kristi, and thank you, Angela. Again, my name is Jason Montague. I'm with RenCon Consultants. I think I can speak for Kristi by saying we're very happy to be here and presenting this project after a few years of working on it. So yeah, I'll speak to the content of the housing element. It's quite a dense element, so this will be more of a high-level, you know, summary of all the individual sections. So the first section is the housing needs assessment, and it is what it sounds like. So it identifies and quantifies existing and projected housing needs of the community. So it's a lot of demographic data, kind of cross-section to housing, things like income, race, familial status, vacancy rates of housing units, homelessness, homelessness counts, homelessness services, emergency shelters, a lot of that information, a lot of new state law that needed to be addressed in this section. So just a few takeaways of the housing needs assessment. So the housing stock in the county is on the older side, so 40% of the units are over 50 years old. And then 1.6% of those units, of all the units in the county, are considered substandard. The housing needs assessment also describes populations with, special needs populations with unique housing needs, and which includes seniors, persons with a disability, large households, farmworkers, and of course, the homeless. So the next section is the housing constraint section, and this can be broken up into three different sections. So it evaluates the governmental, which you can think of as development standard, zoning, anything, you know, in the county code. Non-governmental factors, like cost of land, cost of construction, anything that would constrain housing development. And then environmental barriers, like fire, flood, also infrastructure. That's a huge topic in this section. So just another, again, a few takeaways of that. There is a lack of land with water and sewer availability, just generally in the county. Zoning code restriction, so emergency shelter regulation not consistent with state law. There are new state laws that this housing element addressed concerning emergency shelters. So we brought the county housing element up to speed on that. And then there's, there's an insufficient land zone for high-density development. We'll touch on that later in depth. So those are a few of the main constraints. So the next section is the affirmatively furthering fair housing AFFH section. You can also call it an assessment of fair housing. This is a new section in the housing element. If you worked on the last cycle, the fifth cycle, this wasn't a thing. I think it came to be in 2020 or 2021, something like that. So this is, again, a fairly dense So this is, again, a fairly dense section with a lot of requirements. It requires both a regional and a local assessment of fair housing. So when I say fair housing, talking about how the county approaches outreach, like distributing fair housing materials, how it enforces fair housing complaints, compliance with a variety of fair housing laws, and there are quite a few. And then a significant amount of analysis, so an analysis of segregation patterns, income, race. And Kristi mentioned it earlier, there's two terms, recap and RCAA. So recap is a regional ethnic area of poverty, and then a RCAA area is an area of affluence. So those are two new defined areas that we need to discuss as well. And all of this is compared to housing outcomes, and then there's also a component of local knowledge. So the state requires a lot of kind of ground truthing, and there's a lot of analysis out there, you know, maps and stuff like that, but they require the know-how of people that live in the county and know the county. So there's a significant portion of that as well. So these are the recap and RCAA areas that are identified in the AFFH section. So the recap areas are Airport, Bret Hart, and Rouse, Colorado. And to define a recap area, it's a census tract with 40 or more percent of poverty and 50 or more percent non-white population. And then on the other side, the RCAA areas, which are De Nair, East Oakdale, Knights Ferry, and Valley Home, those are areas with a higher median income and a significant proportion of that area being white. So that's, and that's the state definition of those two areas. To give you a taste of the analysis, this is the county with the TCAC Opportunity Map overlaid. So the TCAC map is a California Tax Credit Allocation, or Committee, sorry, map. And so they define areas from highest resource to high segregation and poverty. So this looks at environmental, economic, and educational scores by census tract. So you can see that the darker blue areas have higher scores in those three categories, while the, kind of the, I guess, the lighter green in the bottom right and towards the middle of the county area have lower scores. All right, moving on to the regional housing needs allocation. So the RENA. So the RENA is an allocation to each of the COGS. So in Stanislaus, this is the Stanislaus Council of Governments. This is the number of units that the, all of the jurisdictions, so all of the cities in the county, must accommodate through the housing element. The Stanislaus County of Governments RENA is 34,344, and the unincorporated county portion is 2,475 units. So the RENA is broken down, turn it. The RENA is broken down by income category, and each income category is based on a percentage of the area meeting income. So you can see the income levels for each category there. So, for example, a very low-income household would make about $24,000 to $40,000 a year, whereas an above-moderate household would make over $96,000 a year. So in, on a incorporated county, about 39% of the RENA is allocated for sites to accommodate lower-income housing, which is a combination of very low and low. So here is a table of how we would meet the RENA. So you can see the RENA in the top row there. The first way to accommodate the RENA is what we call RENA credits, which includes planning and approved units and ADUs. So these, before you even look at sites, you look at these, and you can credit them to the RENA, basically. If there are projects that are in the pipeline, that are planned and approved and expected to be permitted during the housing cycle, they can be counted towards the RENA. And you can also anticipate a certain number of ADUs throughout the eight-year cycle of the housing element. So looking at those two rows, we determined 252 above-moderate units and 184 above-moderate units could be credited to the RENA. And after we do that, we look at sites that are, that have existing residential zoning. The ideal site would be vacant because there's nothing on there to inhibit development. Nothing needs to be demolished. So those are the ideal sites. On those, we found 580 units. And then we look at underutilized sites. In Stanislaus County, that's predominantly a site with a single-family home on one portion of it and a significant amount of excess land as well on the site. And we deducted the area of the house and used the vacant land. So we really tried to avoid, I mean, we did avoid agricultural zoned areas because there's, you know, there's concerns there. And we didn't want to assume that buildings would be really demolished to support housing because there's really not a trend for that. And that's in the county, and that's something that the state really harps on it. These sites need to be realistically developable. So where we landed with sites that are zoned for housing? Could you go back? Okay. So we cover the above-moderate easily with that, but we still have unaccommodated, lower-income, moderate-income units that we need to accommodate for. So here is a map of the planned and approved projects. You can see most of the projects are in the Keys area and the De Nair area. Okay. So moving on to sites appropriate for lower-income units. So there are a number of requirements for lower-income housing. First and foremost, the size. So per state law, a site needs to be between half an acre and 10 acres to accommodate lower-income housing. It needs to allow at least 20 units per acre. It needs to have a realistic likelihood of redevelopment, and it needs to have sewer and water availability. There are many challenges to this. It's quite difficult to find the perfect site. There's, you know, infrastructure availability is a challenge. Adequate land is, of course, a challenge. And then Measure E really limits those sites as well. So because we did not cover the full RENA through existing zoning, we need to rezon sites. So in total, 48 sites were identified for rezoning, and they meet that lower-income Let's see. Yeah, and that comes out to about 1,469 units in total. And then we'll look at the maps here. So sites are identified throughout the county in pretty much every unincorporated area. One quick note on the inventory is the housing, the site's inventory is a paper exercise. It is a capacity analysis to prove to the state that the county has enough land to accommodate their RENA, and if they don't, they need to rezone. That's different than building the housing and, you know, making it affordable to people. So, you know, we do this analysis based on the data we have, but it's quite possible that housing could be realized in a completely different way. There could be, you know, demolition in certain areas or something that we didn't anticipate. But because we're constrained by these requirements, we had to identify these sites. So it's not the, like, end-all, be-all of this is where housing is going to go, and this is where affordable housing is going to go. It's a paper exercise. It's a capacity analysis. Okay, so looking at Bret Hart first. So there's rezoned sites. You can see in the lower-left corner, the purple sites with the green outline. So purple sites are vacant, and then orange sites are non-vacant. So in Bret Hart, we've identified a total of 28 parcels and 613 total units. In De Nair, there are 24 parcels and 259 units in total. And just to be clear, we have, there's a lot of areas where we identified sites. In this presentation, we're only showing the ones that have rezoned sites included. So if you want to look at any of the other communities, we do have those, but just for the sake of time and detail, we shortened it, so. Moving on to Empire, there are 14 total sites. Five of them are identified for rezone for a total of 106 units. In Keys, there are 14 sites identified. Three are identified for rezone for a total of 114 units. And North Series, 22 sites are identified, four rezoned sites, and 180 units in total. Salida, there are five sites. Three of them are rezoned for a total of 28 units. The South Series Lower Central area, there are seven parcels. One of them is a rezoned site for a total of 93 units. And then West Modesto, slightly larger number of units, so 68 total, 18 rezoned, and 571 total units.
So another important chapter of the housing element is the housing plan, and this is the chapter that includes the programs, policies, and actions that we will implement throughout the eight-year planning cycle to help accommodate housing in Stanislaus County. And there are several included in this housing plan that we're proposing that will be included in the next item that you guys will be considering. So the housing plan, we incorporated public comments into the housing plan, you know, the data that we got from the housing needs and constraints analysis, any fair housing issues that were identified, and the affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis. We have policies included to reflect current state law because there were a significant number of laws that were passed from the fifth to the sixth cycle in terms of housing. And then we also have some programs from our previous fifth-cycle housing element that we retained but updated and added detail to. So to just give you the brief overview of what the main themes are, we have a goal surrounding conserving and improving existing housing stock, and there are programs that have to do with home rehab, residential compliance, building and design standards for energy efficiency, and preserving at-risk affordable housing. We have another goal aimed at assisting in the development of new affordable housing and programs in that goal around affordable housing development assistance, density bonus law, housing choice vouchers, supporting home ownership opportunities, development of a housing trust fund, and regional collaboration to facilitate housing. We have another goal that is aimed at providing adequate sites. This is where we have the action for our rezone program. We have programs that are aimed at ensuring adequate sites to accommodate growth, no-net-loss zoning, replacement housing, which those are both state law requirements, providing adequate sites for lower-income households, adaptive reuse, zoning for a variety of housing types. That's a program that we have a number of zoning ordinance amendments proposed from actions included in that program. Expediting project review, so streamlining our permit review process, encouraging the development of accessory dwelling units, and an infrastructure program, which ours is mainly focused on sewer infrastructure. We have another goal that has to do with housing for persons with special needs. Again, we focused on special needs that are pertinent for our area, which include farmworker housing, the homeless population, extremely low-income housing. And then also, there's an element of community and outreach for the programs that are available. There's another goal that has to deal with equal housing opportunities for all persons, and this is where we have our actions surrounding environmental justice and affirmatively furthering fair housing, our fair housing services, and displacement prevention, place-based strategies, and housing mobility. So again, these are the goals and actions that are new to this six-cycle housing element. So generally, we received a lot of comments, which I already went over, about geographic targeting. So we did incorporate a number of our actions that are going to be targeted towards recaps or RCAS to areas that are at a high displacement risk or are disadvantaged unincorporated community, also known as a DUC. We targeted our actions to special populations that were highlighted as being in significant need here in Stanislaus County, including farmworkers, persons with disabilities, the homeless, and extremely low-income families. And then we added actions to allow for flexible, adaptive, and alternative housing, expanded fair housing services, continuing our work on infrastructure, and then we have farmworker housing actions. And again, actions to bring us current to state law, and also to implement our housing Stanislaus project, which was a process that we did with all the jurisdictions, all the cities in Stanislaus County, where we identified some best practices for housing, for affordable housing development and outreach. We did incorporate those policies into our housing element, housing plan. Some new actions that have to do with the changes in housing law over the last cycle have to do with AFFH and environmental justice. So those have to do with housing and employment mobility, place-based strategies, anti-displacement strategies, community outreach strategies, fair housing services, and geographic targeting, which I already mentioned, for places at high risk of displacement, recaps, RCAs, in high and low resource areas. Okay, so with every project that we bring to you that is a land use project, we do analyze that project for consistency with our general plan and zoning. The chapters of our general plan are required to be internally consistent, and the housing element is most closely tied to the land use element, which does require us to evaluate those rezoned sites and any sites identified for housing to ensure that there's an effective level of public service, to address any sphere of influence issues. So in this case, that required if we had any rezoned sites within the sphere of influence of a city, we would met with that city to make sure that they were in agreement with our proposal. And then also with any community plans. So for us, the rezone program, we had to analyze the community plans and consistency of De Nair and Keys. We're also required, because of state law, if, once we touch the housing element, it kind of triggers all these other updates that we need to do to the general plan. One is an update to our disadvantaged unincorporated communities report, which is located in the land use element, and also updates to our safety element, and then we have to develop environmental justice policies. So these are all updates to the general plan that will follow this housing element item and will continue through 2026. And the first step that we are doing to creating those updates is putting together an ad hoc committee to review policies for the safety and environmental justice policy updates, and that's in the process right now. We are proposing for environmental review that the board adopt a notice of exemption based on Section 15061B3, the common sense exemption, due to this document being a long-range planning document, which provides guidance for policies and programs that will not directly lead to development. Again, it's paper exercise, as Jason emphasized. So the rezones will come to you with the item that's coming next, and any of those vacant, underutilized sites, if someone were to develop on those, it would just be a building permit, which is ministerial, not subject to environmental review. And again, like I said, the implementation, which is coming next, did go through a separate environmental review. The planning commission did consider the six-cycle housing element during a public hearing that was held on October 16th, 2025. During the public hearing, CRLA did provide some additional comments and did speak on the item. They reiterated concerns with the amount of the lower-income RENA that was being located in lower resource areas of the county, and they provided some recommendations for additional actions to be in the county, and they provided some recommendations for additional actions to be incorporated into the county's housing plan. And ultimately, on a vote of six to zero, the Planning Commission recommended the Board of Supervisors approve the county's six-cycle housing element as was presented by staff. Staff reviewed CRLA's letter post-Planning Commission hearing in more detail, which did request some infrastructure projects be prioritized in high-resource areas, and that community plans and overlay districts be utilized to increase the potential for affordable housing in high-resource areas. They also suggested that community plans be completed for several low-resourced areas in the county. Ultimately, staff's analysis found that their requests were either already covered by existing actions, which I have listed here, they're also found in your board report, or were unfeasible for other reasons. We did continue to work with CRLA to address their comments. We had a meeting with them on November 6, after the Planning Commission hearing. We provided CRLA with a list of existing actions that we believed were based around place-based improvements, such as parks and infrastructure projects, the development of land use actions, land use plans, increasing housing diversity in RCAAs of high-resource areas, providing resources to residents in low-resource areas and areas at a high risk of displacement. And we also had several actions around community outreach that we felt had already addressed their requests and our comments. Following that meeting and the sharing with them of the existing actions, CRLA submitted an additional comment letter on November 20, requesting some additional amendments, which is an attachment to your board agenda item. They requested that annual reporting be added to Action 11G, which deals with code enforcement efforts on substandard housing units. They requested specific activities be added to Action 53H, which commits the county to preparing and establishing a comprehensive anti-displacement strategy. They requested that potential rezoned sites in high-resource areas be advertised to potential developers and added to Action 31A, which commits the county to making the site's inventory publicly available. Their letter also requested that support for infrastructure improvements in high-resource areas be added to Action 39G, which commits the county to continuing to seek grant funding for infrastructure improvements. And another recommendation was that the county add a funding commitment to actions included in Program 4-4, which have to do with community outreach, to pay, to commit to paying for in-person community engagement-related costs, such as childcare and food. So staff again analyzed these recommendations and does believe that our current actions cover all of their requests. But if the Board of Supervisors wishes to incorporate any of these recommendations from CRLA's more recent letter, which is included as attachment to your board agenda item, you may do so as part of your actions. But we do commit to continuing to work with CRLA to conduct meaningful community outreach throughout the implementation process for each of the actions included in the housing plan. The board adopted version of the six-cycle housing element will be sent to HCD for a 60-day review period following the board action on that item. Again, certification requires board adoption of both the housing element and the rezone program, which is going to come with the next item. And certification does come along with it some strings for grant funding. So we do have several grants that are at risk right now. If we don't get certified, that we may not qualify for those grant funding sources. So again, on a vote of six to zero, the Planning Commission is recommending that today the Board of Supervisors approve Stanislaus County's six-cycle housing element as proposed in the October 16, 2025 Planning Commission staff report, including the finding that the project is exempt from CEQA and that a notice of exemption be filed, and making all of the general plan consistency findings as outlined in your board report as recommended Actions 1 through 6. And that concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Any questions? Vida?
About some comments. So this is an eight-year arena cycle, and we're three years into it. And by the time this gets adopted, we're going to start working on the next one, it appears. And this is, you know, good work when we were talking about going through De Nair specifically and rezoning. I know that there was a lot of concern, and we'll take that up on the next one. But the zoning is overlay, correct?
No, the rezoning is just a rezoning. It's not an overlay.
Just, okay. Originally, we were talking about dual zoning.
We went away from the overlay zone because HCD is not supportive of that technique.
Yeah, there was a court case. We just call it the Clovis case, but they don't allow like an overlay. Basically, the density, the required density, has to be in the underlying zoning. So you can, if the underlying zoning meets the standard, in this case, it's 20 acres per acre for a lower-income unit, that's fine. And then you can put an overlay on top to make it even higher, but you can't rely on overlays for, yeah, it's, yeah.
To meet arena.
Yeah. And because of Measure E, again, I'm not saying positive, negative, but it's going to become harder and harder for us unless we start, because I think through Measure E, if we can't meet arena numbers, we're allowed to take in a few acres. I can't remember the exact amount of acres, but...
I did not highlight this in my report because there was so much information, but there is an action in the housing plan that allows us to trigger that exemption if we can't meet arena throughout the planning cycle. And we do have a list of like alternative sites that would be subject to Measure E normally, that would, could be exempt from the Measure E requirements, but it does require a board finding, it requires a finding from HCD. And then Commissioner Zipser did ask the question during the Planning Commission hearing, if, even if you were not subject to Measure E, if AgLand was rezoned for residential purposes, would our Ag mitigation policy apply? And we do believe it would apply. So even if you triggered that exemption to Measure E, we would still be on the hook for Ag mitigation.
Okay. And just for the public, this doesn't guarantee that houses get built.
No.
This is aspirational, and it's a plan on how to build houses and where you build them, and what the zoning, underlying zoning. But we still need people to want to build houses, and, you know, the counties and the cities, we all have impediments because we want smart growth, but it, again, doesn't get us houses. It's a lot of work, though. Again, I think the aspirational goal is okay. I would tell you to continue working with CRLA, you know, just to alleviate some of their concerns. I wouldn't be supportive of including any of their recommendations at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much for the informative presentation. I do applaud you on your efforts. Very excited to see these projections and these numbers, especially in my district and District 5, some of those communities that are listed. And we just want to keep working together in collaborative spirit and try to meet our housing demands for Stanislaus County. So again, thank you again.
Any others? Okay. Going to go ahead and open the public hearing and acknowledge we do have two written comments. Does anyone like to make comment on this agenda item?
Everyone?
Morning.
I'm Attorney with California Rural Legal Assistance, here to make some comments. So as you've heard, we've been speaking with the county about this. And I, first, before I launch into anything, I just want to thank Christie and Angela for all of their collaboration and the conversations we've been able to have over the last few months. I think it's led to some really productive changes that we're really excited to see in the housing element. So obviously, they already went into great detail about some of the comments that we've made. So I want to just kind of focus on providing some additional context and information about those recommendations, and underscoring the urgency of addressing some of these housing issues through some of the changes that we're recommending. Yeah, so first of all, just to highlight a couple legal requirements. So number one, obviously, there's the requirement for the county to account for all of the arena numbers of housing at all the different income levels across the county, right? So the county has to make sure there's enough housing, housing zoned, sites zoned, to make housing available at every different income level throughout the county at the numbers that they've been, that the county's been assigned by the state. In addition to that, there's also this duty to affirmatively further fair housing. And so the duty to affirmatively further fair housing is really about combating racial segregation, housing segregation, to make sure that the county is taking active steps to combat existing patterns of segregation. And that means making sure that areas that are racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty are brought additional resources to help those communities thrive, as well as finding ways to develop more affordable housing options in racially concentrated areas of affluence. So in terms of the statistics and the data, over 80% of the county's lower-income housing units have been allocated to very low-resource areas. Many of those are in recap areas. And in fact, over 40% have been allocated just to the community of Bret Hart alone. Meanwhile, only one higher-resource area, De Nair, has been allocated any lower-income housing units at all. Most of the other higher-income areas have not been allocated any lower-income housing units. The reason for this, of course, as they mentioned, is that there's a lack of infrastructure availability in a lot of the higher-resource areas. That's, obviously, you want to make sure there's infrastructure available if you're going to be developing affordable housing. We understand that that's definitely a concern and a real constraint. The problem is that these infrastructure concerns are also still concerns in these lower-resource racially concentrated areas of poverty as well. In the community of Bret Hart, you know, that's going to be over, potentially over 400 new households, which will be going into just that one school that they have in Bret Hart. There's also, you know, there's infrastructure projects going on in Bret Hart, which is great, really happy to see that progress, but it's not yet enough to be able to tackle the severe lack of infrastructure in that area. You know, just speaking with residents, you know, even Dallas Street is going to be partly built out by the current infrastructure project, but it's the low point of the neighborhood, geographically speaking. And, you know, it floods all the time during the rainy season, so they still have these really severe infrastructure deficits. And adding a bunch of more housing, or obviously, it's not going to be developing the housing, but to, you know, if the allocation is played out and a bunch more housing is developed, that's going to be an additional strain on the resources and infrastructure of Bret Hart and the other recap neighborhoods where a significant amount of lower-income housing is going to be developed, like Spencer Marshall, Bystrom, South Series as well. And on top of that, on top of some of these infrastructural constraints, there's some really significant just housing condition and housing issues that are particularly prevalent in these disadvantaged, underserved recap areas, including, so over 60% of tenants in Bret Hart and Mass. Colorado are overpaying in rent. So paying over 30% of their income, their household income and rent. There are high levels of overcrowding and high levels of substandard housing conditions in many of these areas. And unfortunately, a lot of tenants that we've spoken to are not receiving really the benefits of the housing inspections that they're supposed to be able to get. Either they're too afraid to come to report housing-related issues because they're worried about retaliation from their landlords, or they're not really experiencing the follow-up and the housing conditions aren't being addressed. So with all of that said, there's some really significant, so there's kind of two halves to our concerns at the end of the day. So half of it is, we're concerned that there's, you know, obviously, these housing issues that are, that need to be addressed in the lower-resource areas. And at the same time, there's no realistic, like, ability for the county to allow the development of more affordable housing in the higher-resource areas. So that's, that's the context for which, or for our, the comments that we provided, for the recommendations that we've made. And so just summarizing some of those changes, you know, we're asking to, for that, for housing, for tenant inspection complaint enforcement, we're asking for an...
Keep going.
Shoot, sorry about that.
Finish up your thought.
For sure. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so we're asking for, for annual reports on the geographical distribution and the efficacy of tenant, tenant housing complaint inspections, for the anti-displacement strategy, which we're very happy to see that that's, there's a commitment to that. But we think that some additional commitments to additional, so actually committing to in-person outreach specifically, to go out into these communities, and also committing to, you know, looking into the feasibility, some additional well-known and recognized anti-displacement measures would be really important to making sure that the anti-displacement strategy can be effective. We're also asking, and yeah, and then we're just asking for, you know, continuing to work with affordable housing developers to help develop affordable housing in the higher-resource areas, as well as looking for some of that grant funding, and continuing to invest in funding for areas like Bret Hart that, you know, and also, you know, Spencer Marshall, that really need these really basic infrastructure needs to be able to accommodate the housing that's supposed to be allocated there. Yeah, so those are our comments. And again, like they said, we look forward to working with the county and continuing to work with them over the implementation period on making sure that we can address these, these housing issues in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Chair.
Just a quick question, if I could. And I don't necessarily to you, Nick, maybe to Christie or to Jason. So to your point with regarding to infrastructure, the need for infrastructure in these, you can sit down, Nick, sorry. Yeah, to the extent in these, these low-resource areas and the need for infrastructure, but we're talking about a lot of housing to come there. My thought was, and just, correct me if I'm wrong here, as those houses come, will come infrastructure also with those. Is that, am I wrong? Won't that be put into the price of these houses and to help pay for those infrastructure?
So we did confirm with our Public Works Department that if a building permit came in for high-density housing on one of these rezoned sites, that they would be required to put in basic infrastructure, like curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlights. So that would be required. And then also in terms of the infrastructure for, capacity for the school districts, school and fire districts do contact us on a regular basis to ask us if any housing capacity has been increased in their district boundaries. And so then we coordinate with them, we give them that information, and then they address, they adjust their fees accordingly. So that's a process that we're always, every year we go through.
So that's what I was thinking, Nick. When I think of these things going into these, what they call low-resource areas, I think it's going to be an upgrade for the community. It's going to, everybody's kind of, you know, rising tide rises all ships. It's going to, it's going to help all the other properties there with infrastructure that will hopefully, that's needed in those areas by coming in and doing. Anyway, just in my mind, that's how I looked at it. It may be different than what you're thinking. But when you talked about that infrastructure issue, I just thought that this actually is going to improve some areas substantially by coming in and doing these things. Anyway, just my thought on it, whether it's correct or not.
Thank you, Chair. Any others like to speak on this agenda item?
Thank you, Ron McMurtry, again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on, since there's been a little bit of focus on the Bret Hart neighborhood, we are, of course, inheriting the past, little leftover stuff. And I just want to point out, as far as school districts are concerned, one of the peculiar things is that Downey High School in Modesto, because other schools were built around and the population's increased, Downey High School District is coming close to almost having to just shut down the school because, you know, the other, the other high schools are covering the neighborhood. And so their school district currently covers people in Bret Hart. Students come from Bret Hart, come to the Transit Center, and then transfer to the 32 to go to that. So there's a little awkwardness there, just, just an FYI for you guys, that that's going on right now. And so that's currently the way the high school district is cut. My real question is, as usual, I'm interested in maps. Can someone direct me to where I can find those maps of the re, the potential rezones? You showed them quickly, but I'd like to examine them more closely for future transit planning.
Sure. Most of our documents are located at www.stancounty-planning.
Planning, okay. And that's it? And those maps are on there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Any others like to speak on this agenda item?
Yes, Chair and Board members, Mil Tree Wyler. I'm going to just talk about a few things because, again, it's going to focus on our farmland. That's the whole focus here, and that's what I'm speaking about. All counties are not the same. And we have to develop a farmland protection zone. The state of California needs to develop a farmland protection zone so that we're not even considered for housing. I mean, there are counties in the state, out of the 50, some of them have no farmland value at all. And we have so much land in our county that has no farmland value at all either. I understand we're building on the housing, or the cities that are already here because they have the infrastructure. We're going to have to start all over and build cities that are not in the central part of our county where the good farmland is. Build some over, you know, Del Porto Canyon. I know they want to put a dam there, but it doesn't look that's, like that's going to happen. That would be a great development where you could just build, start from scratch. I don't know how it'd be funded. I definitely don't know anything about the funding. But we're going to have to do something to protect farmland because our children and descendants are going to need it. And there is no better farmland than what we have here. So just talking about low-income housing is not what's destroying our irreplaceable farmland. It's the moderate and the above-moderate housing that is, because it's creating sprawl. I don't mind if you sprawl up. You could put 10-story buildings, luxury buildings, just like they have all over the world. I mean, they don't have them here. You could go to Israel, I understand, in a city of 40,000... In a city of 40,000 people, they have a 10- or 12-story building, it's family-oriented, it's a family building, but you can also do the luxuries, like, let's put a Trump Tower in Stanislaus County, not on our farmland, or put it in Del Porto Canyon, someplace like that. Build up and not out. How are you going to do that? There's no easy answer to it. I don't have the answer, but that's, the thing we need to do is get our county set up as a farmland protection zone. Just another few comments, because I took part in this in Turlock, they sent out a survey, not this group, but we had another group who took care, was in charge of it. We got over 150 responses, and everyone in Turlock does not want to grow. They want it, they like the small-town feeling, and that's, that's great. Small in area, they can grow up. I have no objection to growing up in Turlock. There were areas that were designated as high, high-density areas, and then it gets shot down, not by the citizens, but by the mayor and her people. In other words, they, they do another one because it was okay in the first one to build high-rise buildings down West Main Street, which is where I live, and it doesn't bother me, Lander Avenue, and Golden State. All those areas were designated for high-density, maybe three, four, five-story building complexes. You've got to start somewhere. You have to stop just building housing that's single-family, single-family housing. You've got to go into luxury, where people want it, you know, luxury condominiums. I do have a nephew that lives in an apartment, or condo, it's not a luxury, but it's, you know, a high-end, it would be just like having your own home, and it's not a problem. We just have to stop sprawling on this farmland, not because, you know, because we want to save the farmland. That's the whole point. We want to save the farmland, that's why we have to find another way to do this. It's not something that's going to be stalled tonight, tomorrow, next week, next year, but we've got to think about it, and we've got to get something. Maybe it needs to be done at the state level, where we have a farmland preservation area. You can't go into the best farmland in the world because it's irreplaceable, we need it for our children and our descendants. Thank you.
Thank you, Milt. Any others would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for any more questions or comments.
I'm just, one last thing, if I could. First, thanks, staff, for doing this. Just a nightmare, I know, for you guys going through this thing, and the amount of hours that you put into this, had to put into this over three years, we're saying here. Just think of all that time we could, if we could dedicate that more towards trying to develop some housing, instead of, you know, spending this time on this plan. I appreciate, I, I, it's, the other frustrating part about this, I guess, is, is that we have the state coming in, you know, one of the things that we have here is, is land use authority, that's what, one of the main jobs, I think, of the Board of Supervisors, and you see that kind of slowly disappearing from local control and having the state come in and tell us how we need to develop, you know, our, our land, or these, these housing, these housing elements, it really is taking away our land use authority, under the threat, and, and as this goes through Stan Cog, as we talked about, under the threat of other penalties, if we don't do this, we're going to lose, you know, transportation funds and things like that. It's just very frustrating to see this going down. There's nothing better than us working on this ourselves. I appreciate CR LA, and we'll continue to work with that, these, these local stakeholder meetings and things, local control, us ourselves trying to figure this thing out is great, but it's hard, very hard when we're frustrated, when we've got the state coming in and telling us, kind of to Milt's point, to, you know, the state coming to tell us what we need to do in our community, and we, and as a community, we should be able to decide that ourselves, and that's what we're here as elected officials, to listen to our, if you mean, listen to CR LA, to listen to our disadvantaged communities, our low resource areas, that's what we do, and, and we don't need the state coming in and telling us how it should be done, because we think we do that very well, and we think we have our ear to the ground always for our community. So, that being said, is where we are, and I, I will support this 100%, I support all your efforts, everything you guys have done here, and I'm sorry you've had to do this, but I think the good stuff that will come out of it is going to come from our own, listening to our own community, not from what the state's telling us what to do, so thank you guys very much.
Before we go any further, I just need to ask if everybody's had a chance to read the written comments? Yeah, you got head shakes, yes, okay. Any other comments or questions? Christie, Jason Wright? Thank you for your presentation, a lot of information, and I agree 100% with my colleague, Terry Witro. We lose a lot of local control, so to speak. It seems like sometimes that we're, we're not in control of our own destiny because we're told constantly how many houses we have to build, and where, and why, and how. And, you know, going back to the, the rezoning and pulling of permits, the assessments that get added on by special districts, school districts, and the regulations that get added on by the state, and I go back to lower income, moderate income, what really is that? What is low income? What is moderate income? Affordability is different for everybody, so I'm not quite sure, it just, it bugs me to some point, because of everything that has to be done adds on to the price of building the multi-unit or the residential home. Sometimes it's, it's just, it's really muddy, but that's my own speaking. Any other comments? All right, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I'll motion approve all staff recommendations.
Second. I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, moving to 6.1, public hearing to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval of general plan amendment, rezon and ordinance amendment application, six-cycle housing element implementation, adoption, and objective design standards for multifamily and mixed-use residential development, and acceptance of an addendum to the certified environmental impact report prepared for the general plan, planning, and community development. Christie, you're back on.
Jason's going to start off on this one, but just generally, the second item is bringing to you several, maybe around 15 or so of those actions included in the housing plan. We're actually implementing them today.
Thank you, Christie. So the, the work goes on, so we, you know, we have the housing element, and now we have to implement the thing. So the project request today is review and recommendation regarding adoption of 139 rezoned properties, objective design standards for multifamily and mixed-use development, zoning text amendments, land use element amendments, and the SEQA general plan EIR addendum. So touching again on rezoned sites, so this slide was present in the first presentation as well, so these are the, the rezoned sites identified as part of the housing element to accommodate a shortfall of the RENA. So 48 sites in total, for a total of 1,469 units. Oh, yeah, and, I thought that was on the next slide. So in addition to the 48 sites, and we'll go through the, these, again, on the maps, there are an additional 91 sites identified to provide a more comprehensive rezon. So the way, you know, the housing element rezoned sites work is you have to look at the site itself, and that often turns into what many call spot zoning, like you'll have one site in the middle of, you know, you know, an area that's, that's zoned for something else, because it's, you know, large enough and all that. So these additional 91 sites are included to make them more comprehensive and, you know, looking at the block level as opposed to just the site level. So moving to De Nair, so you can see the, if you look at the legend, the, the green outlined sites are the rezoned sites as part of the housing element, and the, the other hatched boundaries are the additional rezoned sites. So you can see the, the rezoned sites down in the south part there, and then the additional sites around those also identified for rezon. So the rezon that would occur, they're currently zoned for RA, which is rural agricultural, I think it's one unit per acre, Christie?
Low-density residential.
Yeah, low-density residential, bringing that up to R3, which would be 20 to 25 units per acre. Moving to Empire, there are a few sites there as part of the housing element, and then surrounding sites identified as additional rezoned sites, and those would also be RA to R3 with one planned development to R3. So Keys has three sites in total, and they are all part of the housing element, so we already looked at those. That would be R1 and H1 to R3. And the North Series area, there are three housing element rezoned sites, and then a handful of additional, and again, those would be increased from RA to R3. So the Salida area, there are a few housing element rezoned sites surrounded by additional sites, so these are currently zoned C2, which is a commercial zone, and they would be rezoned to mixed use, so that just means that they would allow for both residential and commercial in the same parcel, to not lose that existing commercial area. South Series, there's only one site, it's a rezon from planned development to R3. The Bret Hart, South Modesto area, these are all part of the housing element rezon, and they would be an upzone from R1 to R3. Continuing to the east side of Bret Hart, so these are all, almost all of these sites are along Crow's Landing Road, and they're zoned commercial C2, so the idea would be to change the, the zone to mixed use, so to keep that corridor commercial and to have, you know, allow for both residential and commercial uses. And then West Modesto, quite a few sites here, most of them are part of the housing element project with the additional rezon sites kind of sprinkled in there in between those. That would be a low-density residential to an R3 upzone. And then the last one is also in West Modesto, there's two sites here, they would be low-density to high-density rezon. Okay, so moving on to another portion of the project, which is the development of objective design standards. So what are objective design standards, also referred to as ODS? So they are standardized, clear, easy-to-follow standards that are, that's supposed to be streamlined and encourage housing production. So objective design standards is not, does not have that subjective interpretation. So the idea is that a, you know, developer or applicant comes in and knows exactly what they need to do, and there's, there's not that interpretation of subjectivity in these standards. So they typically cover architectural style, massing, landscape, signage, and materials. So I, I mentioned streamlined approval, so these would reduce subjectivity, enable ministerial approval, limit delays, increase predictability, support compliance with state housing laws, and encourage housing production. So just to give you an example of the ODS standards, so this would be, you know, building mass and varying roof form, so it would set the standards for those roof forms. So on the left is a di, is it just an example diagram of foot depth, foot width, and building And then a few more examples of what these standards would cover, windows and trim, recessed windows, windows with shutters, windows with awnings, trellises above the garage door, the recess of the garage door, and landscaping.
Okay, the next part of the implementation of the housing element included in this item, several zoning text amendments. So this, again, will implement various programs and actions included in the housing element, which was just adopted, includes amendments to the county's existing zoning ordinance to meet state law requirements, but also to allow for greater flexibility in the siting of housing. One of the biggest amendments we have is a new zoning ordinance chapter, the mixed-use zone, which you just saw, the mixed-use proposed zonings are going to be in Salida along Broadway Avenue and along Crow's Landing Avenue. They will allow for a residential density between 20 to 25 dwelling units per acre, but also maintain the existing general commercial permitted uses. We're also introducing single-room occupancy, which are permitted now, would be permitted now in the R3 zoning district, to provide affordable, small-scale housing options and to increase housing density. We're removing single-family dwellings as a permitted use in the multifamily R3 zoning district to encourage multifamily development in high-density zoning districts. Multiple changes are proposed to comply with state law, including raising the emergency shelter bed cap from 10 to 20, this is a requirement from HCD. We are including a provision for SB9 lot splits, which this is an allowance, state law requires us to allow in low-density residential zoning districts, that a lot can be split in half if it's served by water and sewer, down to a minimum of 1,200 square feet. And then we have to allow the development of a single-family home and an ADU on each of those resulting lots. You can only do it one time, and the property owner needs to live on one of the two resulting parcels. We've also included some allowances that are required by state law to allow for farmworker housing in the A2, which we have to allow up to 12 single-family dwellings or up to 36 individual beds in the A2 for farmworker housing. And also, we're allowing for low-barrier navigation centers in commercial zones that allow for residential development, that's another state law requirement. We already did that, so we're just adding it to the C1, which is the neighborhood commercial district. And then we have to allow for mobile homes in all zoning districts that allow for residential uses, which we already did, with the exception of the historical sites district. So now you can have a mobile home in the historical sites district, which for Stanislaus County is just a range, ornate's ferry, but they are still subject to historical design standards. Some other text amendments that, for zoning text amendments that are proposed today are proposed to make residential development more flexible, so that includes increasing the lot coverage limit from 40 to 50% in the low-density R1 zoning district, adding some permitted uses in the medium-density residential R2 district, including allowing for two-family dwellings, up to 14 units per acre, and increasing the lot coverage limit from 50 to 60%. And in the multifamily residential district, R3, we've cleaned up the terminology of different permitted uses to match with our definitions, to be consistent with other zoning ordinance chapters. Again, we've added the single-room SRO housing as a permitted use, subject to a staff approval permit. We decreased the minimum lot size from 6,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet. We added the requirement for objective design standards, as Jason just went over. We added rezon site requirements, including a prohibition on new single-family dwellings per HCD's requirements, and a requirement that development on rezon sites allow for a minimum density of at least 20 dwelling units per acre, up to 25. We also have some proposed amendments to the land use element of the general plan. As I said in my last presentation, the general plan and zoning must be consistent with each other, so the rezones currently have a general plan designation of low-density. The mixed-use, does those sites have a land use element designation of commercial? So we just had to make a minor tweak to the commercial land use designation to allow for mixed use as a compatible zoning district. The rezon sites in De Nair are going to require a community plan amendment from low-density to medium-high-density residential, and again, 101 of the rezon parcels currently have low-density residential as a general plan designation, or commercial or planned development. In order to be consistent, they also need to be amended to medium-high-density residential. So a lot of the project outreach and review that we did for the So a lot of the project outreach and review that we did for the implementation portion of this project was done with the housing element development itself, but we did also do a separate 30-day review that we sent out to interested parties, to local, state, federal agencies, to HCD, to our email list that we maintain, to the property owners of the rezoned sites, and then also, our landowner policy requires that we notify 300 feet out and two parcels in all directions to surrounding landowners. So that property owner list and surrounding landowner list consisted of almost 3,000, which we did send out on multiple occasions with each public hearing notice and with this 30-day review period. It did lead to a lot of confused people, I would say, we got a lot of phone calls, a lot of people at the counter, we did a lot of explaining. We went to various municipal advisory councils between June and August of 2025. We did receive a recommendation of support from each of those municipal advisory councils, the ones that had their rezones within their areas, with the exception of the Keys MAC. The Keys MAC did vote against the rezones, against supporting the rezones because the property, their reasoning that they stated was because the property owners were in attendance. And we also did present the rezoned sites to the general plan update committee in September of 2025. Again, we had a planning commission hearing on October 16th, and here we are at the Board of Supervisors, both of these meetings have public hearing notices sent out to the interested parties, to local state agencies, HCD, and the property owners and surrounding property owners. Again, we worked with CR LA. A lot of their responses did focus on their desire to have us place additional low-income RINA housing in high-resource areas. They focused on requesting that we add additional rezoned sites in De Nair. Also, they requested that we conduct meaningful community outreach. And the public service provider input that we got from Burbank, Paradise, and Salida Fire Districts that I went over in the last presentation were also relevant to the rezoned sites because they did cite concerns with adequate fire service provision for the rezoned sites. Again, fire fees will be paid prior to issuance of a building permit, and we are in constant communication with the districts as they update their fees, we let them know if there's a potential for increased housing in their district. And we did add a requirement for the rezoned sites in Salida within the mixed-use zoning chapter that's being proposed, that they're required to annex into the Salida Fire Community Facility District. So out of all this outreach, we did have multiple requests to have properties added to the rezone program. Each of these requests were analyzed, but we were not able to add them, sometimes because they had the wrong zoning, sometimes because they weren't, you know, large enough, or they didn't have access to water or sewer. And then we had a lot of inquiries post-planning commission about the rezoned sites. All of them were in support, with the exception of one, a property owner in Salida, he just didn't understand, he wasn't a fan of the mixed use, is how it was presented to me. And here is the map that CR LA had provided a list to us of parcels that they suggested that we added into the rezone program. You see the sites that they recommended in yellow and in red are the sites that we have included that we're proposing today to rezon. And the CR LA's request was in order to make a more balanced amount of our RINA in the RCA high-resource areas rather than the low-resource areas. Staff's analysis, you know, with the additional rezoned sites, not just the Reno sites, not just the RINA sites, we kind of found a more balance between. The example they used is that we had 40% of our lower-income RINA in Bret Hart. We didn't add any sites in Bret Hart, all the sites surrounding Fairview Park, which are all vacant, so those are all being used for our RINA, but no additional sites are being requested for this, this rezone project, whereas we are adding sites in De Nair for this rezone project that are non-RINA sites. And when you look at them combined, they're kind of almost equal, 24 acres in Bret Hart, 21 acres in De Nair. The maximum density that will be allowed for through the rezones, 609 units in Bret Hart, 537 units in De Nair, so although when you look at just the, the sites being rezoned for the RINA, they are, you know, there are significantly more in Bret Hart, when you look at the sites being rezoned through the implementation, they're more equal. Again, all projects that we bring before you need to be analyzed for their general plan and zoning consistency, they must be internally consistent, the chapters of the general plan and the zoning chapters must be consistent with each other, and the housing element is most closely related to the land use element. Again, this project is including some amendments to that land use element to ensure consistency, amendments to the De Nair community plan to ensure consistency, an amendment to the commercial land use designation to add for that new mixed-use zoning district. We did evaluate each of the rezoned sites to ensure that they would maintain an effective level of public service. Again, we coordinated with the cities where their sites were within a sphere of influence to ensure that they were okay with the potential rezoned sites. We evaluated the community plans of De Nair and Keys to ensure consistency, and not listed here, but we also did coordinate with the municipal advisory councils where there were rezoned sites within their districts to ensure that they were okay with the projects. And again, the housing element update is going to trigger some additional general plan updates that will be coming before you in 2026, including the update to the disadvantaged unincorporated communities report and safety and environmental justice policies. The implementation project before you, we did prepare an EIR addendum, sorry, an addendum to our general plan EIR, which was adopted by the board in 2016 as part of our general plan update. The addendum was prepared based on the following, that the project would increase density on the identified rezoned parcels, it would not facilitate development beyond the total remaining build-out that the general plan EIR had considered, it would not result in new environmental effects or substantially increase previously identified environmental effects than what were analyzed in the general plan EIR, and future development facilitated by the project would be subject to applicable regulations permitting county ordinances and would be required to pay all applicable fire, school, and public facility fees. And with that, we did hold a planning commission hearing on October 16th. The public hearing was open, no one spoke during the public hearing, and on a vote of 6-0, the planning commission recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve the county's six-cycle housing element as, sorry, housing element implementation as presented by staff. So the recommendation before you today is one of approval, which include amendments to the general plan and zoning designations of 139 properties, amendments to the zoning ordinance, to the land use element, to adopt objective designs, design standards, and the general plan EIR addendum, as outlined in your board report, as recommended, Actions 1, 2, 6. And with that, staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Christine, Jason. Any questions from the board? I see none, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, and we, again, going back to the two comments that, that are written out, and the board has acknowledged that we have read them. Are there anyone out in the audience that would like to speak on this? Mel.
Yes, Mel Treewiler. I'm going to focus on just De Nair because I'm very familiar with De Nair, and I'm understanding we're going to have some R3 there, but my point is, if I wanted to build a six-story luxury condo in De Nair, would this allow me to do that, or do we also have height restrictions on this? What is the restriction? I mean, let's say we wanted a luxury condo in De Nair, could we do that? Could we have a six-story luxury condo in De Nair with the current standards? And again, I'm not, I mean, I am concerned about the low income, but I'm not concerned about the low income, because the low income is not what's eating up the farmland, it's the moderate and the above moderate that's eating it up. So we've got to get those people into high-rises that they love, it's going to be something they love, or we have to go east and west and get out of this prime farmland area. So that's the goal, so let's work on that, let's make that our goal, and let's remember you can't replace this farmland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
So I want an answer for that.
Okay, sorry, I was looking it up, the, the height limit is 45 feet in the R3, so I think our billing, chief billing official indicated that I would accommodate up to four stories, not six.
That, I'm sure the fire department would have something to say about that, too.
I wish I could make a comment. Could I make one?
They've got, they've got a truck out.
Okay, the comment is, I continually hear about the fire department, the fire department has nothing to do about this. In Turlock, we wanted a four-story building. The fire department said, well, we can't do that, we don't have a ladder truck. Well, the fire chief, Chief Lowe, I talked to him later, he is, was in Las Vegas when it was 10 years ago when they had the high-rise fire, they don't have ladder trucks that go up to the top of the high-rise, you build the fire suppression in the building. Anything over four-story has complete fire, fire suppression in the building, so those two or three four-story buildings that were built on Mona Vista there, across from the university, have fire suppression. They don't have to have fire trucks, so it has nothing to do with the fire department, it has to do with the building itself. Don't use that as an excuse to not build high-rise buildings, that is not an excuse. There wouldn't be any high buildings in Los, or in San Francisco, that was, you know, reasonable, it's not reasonable.
Thanks, Mel. Any others like to, any others like to make public comment on this issue? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board for additional questions or comments. And/or a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a first.
I'll second.
I have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
We're going to take a quick five-minute break. Okay, we're back in session. Moving on, on the agenda is 7-1, approval to adopt plans and specifications aboard a construction agreement to George Reed Incorporated in the amount of $21,764,390. Approve a professional service agreement for construction management services with MNS engineers. Engineers Incorporated in the amount of two million, five-hundred-seventy-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixteen for the urban pocket area nine, and as stated on the agenda. Dave Blument.
Good morning, board. All right, we're here to talk about this, uh, this, uh, contract and how we're gonna propose funding it. This is a table, we've seen it many times, this is how we, um, divvied up the, um, the ARPA funding, and that happened back in August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and then on March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, the board approved updated strategies for the US ARPA funds, where the community infrastructure saw an additional five-point-eight million. And here's the project list. Um, this is the original one, we've seen it all before, it's there in the record. And here's, um, how we divvied up the five-point-eight million, we added Valley Home, Sylvan Coffee, Hickman, and we're talking about Colorado Warehouse Infrastructure Project today. The project consists of installation of sidewalks, storm drain facilities, sewer mains and laterals replacements, and the widening and restriping of roadways. Project is bound by South Avenue on the north, Garden Avenue on the south, Sutter Avenue on the west, Sunset on the east. The city of Modesto has received five million dollars from the state for improvements in an incorporated pocket, and will be investing it in the Colorado Warehouse neighborhood. The Public Works staff has obtained a state water board grant for the installation of the sewer mains and laterals within this neighborhood, and the intent of the ARPA-funded improvements is to improve public health and safety by reducing localized flooding through the construction of storm drainage facilities, improving pedestrian connectivity by constructing sidewalks. And we bid this project out back in, um, July, opened bids in September, and, um, the engineer's estimate was twenty-six-point-five million dollars, low bid was twenty-one-point-seven million dollars by George Reed. And here's the fiscal impact. A construction contract of twenty-one-point-seven million, ten percent of that is your construction contingency, construction management is two-and-a-half million, construction support is three-hundred-thousand, and construction engineering staff is thirty thousand for a total of twenty-six million, eight-hundred-forty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. And, uh, the total project cost is estimated to twenty-six-point-eight million, currently twenty-point-three million of funding is committed to the project, ARPA five-point-seven million, City of Modesto five million, state water board grant nine-point-six million. Today's staff is recommending moving one-point-five million of PCAF and three-point-four million of ARPA for a total of four-point-nine million dollars to be really allocated to the project, bringing total construction funding to twenty-five-point-two million. Staff, um, took direction, um, in a previous board meeting, uh, we're gonna continue looking for, uh, different funding opportunities to cover the remaining shortfall of one-point-six-seven-eight million. For now, to ward the project, staff has identified road maintenance and rehabilitation account funding as a potential funding source to cover the shortfall. Staff understands the need to seek additional outside funding. The RMRA will not be spent until Public Works reports back to the board in accordance with recommendation twelve in this board agenda item. And here's the table that shows the funding and how much is, um, what we're recommending for RMRA contingency. Staff recommends, approve the plans and specifications for the urban pocket area nine Colorado Warehouse Project, award a construction agreement to George Reed for the urban pocket area nine Colorado Warehouse Project, authorize the director of public works to execute a construction agreement with George Reed in the amount of twenty-one million, seven-hundred-sixty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety dollars, authorize the director of public works to execute change orders not to exceed ten percent, approve a professional service agreement with MNS engineers for construction management, authorize the general services agency director, purchasing agent to execute that professional services agreement, approve the cost-sharing agreement between the City of Modesto and Stanislaus County regarding reimbursement of costs related to the destruction of this pocket, authorize the chief executive officer to execute that cost-sharing agreement, approve the reallocation of three-point-three-five-nine million of ARPA plan funds from the urban pocket area forty Hernan Project to urban pocket area nine, approve the reallocation of six-hundred-thousand dollars of building community infrastructure funds from urban pocket area forty Hernan Project to urban pocket area nine, approve the reallocation of nine-hundred-thousand dollars of PCAF funds from the Beistrom Neighborhood Pedestrian Sidewalk Project to the urban pocket nine Colorado Warehouse Project. Direct the, direct, direct the director to return to the Board of Supervisors with funding alternatives totaling one-point-seven million dollars, direct the auditor controller to increase estimated revenue and appropriations by twenty-six-point-eight million, and the Public Works Urban Pocket Infrastructure Project Budget Unit, and authorize the director of public works to take any pre-action necessary to carry out the purpose and intent of these recommendations. And staff is available for questions.
Any questions for Dave? All right. I'm gonna open up public comment on this agenda item. Anyone in the audience like to comment? I'm looking at Ron, I'm looking at Steve.
And Milt's over there, I couldn't see.
No, I'm far left.
I'll, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for additional comments, questions, and/or motion.
This just comes back to the same thing, uh, RMRA has to come back to the board, I won't support it if it comes back and we have to utilize that money, but I'm gonna move this forward because fully funded budget.
Jody, I see you reaching for your mic. No? Okay. And I agree with the comments Vito just made, uh, obviously, my condition, pavement condition index is, is lower than all of the other districts, so I'm fighting and scratching for all the money I can to put back in District One, so, and we understand that.
Wish you to approve all staff recommendations.
I got a first.
Second.
I got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
All right, correspondence, we, uh, do acknowledge, uh, receipt of correspondence and refers recommended on the agenda. Board of Supervisor reports. Chance?
Just have a, a quick report, I, I do wanna thank Dave and the Public Works Department for their, um, their quick response to some of the flooding issues we were having out on, uh, San Joaquin Street in Modesto over by Stanislaus Golf Course. So again, David, thank you so much, thanks to the team, you guys do wonderful work, and thank you for being responsive to that.
I love that, that's great. So I just wanna report out that, uh, Supervisor Chance Condit, Supervisor Chairman Buck Condit, and Supervisor Manny Graywall and I, along with various staff members, attended the CSAC Conference over in San Jose this past week. Manny was, um, he was just reappointed to the government finance as the chairman again, and, uh, congratulations, did, did great work, but, uh, those conferences are always amazing to me in that you, you sit and talk to your fellow supervisors and you, you can figure out quickly that everyone has the same issues, but everyone's trying something different. It's always good to just share ideas, uh, and, and there's a ton of breakout sessions, uh, I think during Supervisor Graywall's session, there was veterans, I'm trying to think what your other issue was, but transportation land use wasn't yours, but we're talking about the vehicle miles traveled versus, um, gas tax, a conversion, uh, but just lots of, uh, great interactions, lots of great things to learn.
Thank you, Vito. May I? No. Cover her. It's good?
No, actually, I will say, uh, I enjoyed going to the Turlock Parade this year with, uh, Supervisor Whitrow and Supervisor Kaza, thank you for the invite, uh, I heard there was twenty thousand people, and I believe it, uh, it seemed like it was very, uh, well-attended, and then the next day Supervisor Whitrow and I got to be in the parade for Modesto, which was also very well-attended, so really enjoyed the festive holiday festivities this holiday weekend.
All right, great. Legislative Fiscal Management report.
Yeah, just a couple items to report, um, yesterday the governor announced an award of fifteen million dollars of local partnership program funds for the Seventh Street Bridge Replacement Project. Um, this was a, a great announcement for us, uh, part of a larger one-point-one-billion-dollar program, uh, for state infrastructure, uh, at the state level, but happy to see those funds coming to that really important project here in our local area. It's, uh, very important to note that, um, uh, these types of grant awards are only available for self-help agencies, uh, that have local transportation tax, so it does highlight the importance of our local voter-approved Measure L program. Um, and then we've already discussed CSAC, so I'll skip down and just, uh, recognize that, um, we, uh, all know through the news that the federal government is funded for now, uh, but Congress must still complete, uh, remaining appropriations bills by January thirtieth to avoid another funding lapse, so we're on to this next cycle of hoping that, um, there can be, uh, a deal-making in, at the federal government level to keep us all go in the right direction, so that's all I have for you today.
All right, thank you. Announcements, uh, the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors Workshop will be held on Thursday, December eleventh, at nine AM at Oak Valley Hospital Redwood Conference Center, that, that's at three-fifty South Oak Avenue in Oakdale. Also, Sergeant Behringer, Deputy Serrano, thank you guys for your overwatch, and, uh, we are going to adjourn, but we do have closed session.
That's right, Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, two different items, we've got, we've got a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six with agency negotiators Jody Hayes, Ryan Loop, and Joanna Navarro, labor organizations, our service employees, International Union, Local Five-Two-One, and the County Attorneys Association. In addition, we have conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government, Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine, parent D, parent one, one case, Inray Diablo Grande Community Facilities District Number One, bankruptcy case number two-five-dash-two-six-six-three-five, U.S. Bankruptcy Court, Eastern District of California. May I be approached and make public comment?
Any public comment on closed session? See a none, we adjourn.